Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. A happy Monday to you all. We have a full plate this evening. I'd like to begin by the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to ask...
What, a roll call?
The first a roll call. So excited. Roll call by the city clerk, please.
Mike Bruno.
Here.
Tara Burkhardt. Don Cummings.
Here.
Dean Kilburg.
Here.
Craig Maladra.
Here.
Richard Marx.
Here.
Jim Merdecky.
Here.
Mary Sino.
Here.
Tom Simonian.
Yeah.
Ron Singer.
Aye. Yes. Here.
A full house. I'd like to ask our nominee, Mr. Michael Antonori, to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Item 3A, ladies and gentlemen, is to open the public hearing for the fiscal year 2016-2017 budget. A roll call would be in order. I ask our city clerk to take the role to open the hearing.
Jim Merdecky.
Aye.
Mary Sino.
Aye.
Tom Simonian.
Aye.
Ron Singer.
Aye.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
This public hearing on the 2016-2017 fiscal year budget is open. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear from our constituents, the citizens of Geneva, business owners as well as property owners within the corporate limits with respect to the budget being proposed. Later in the agenda, of course, is the opportunity for council members to comment as we have multiple items still to discuss. So if there's anyone here this evening to comment on the budget as proposed, we welcome you to the podium. Yes, sir. Welcome. How are you?
Good.
How are you? Good.
Good evening. For those who don't know, my name is John Schultz. I was born and raised in Geneva, presently reside at 712 East Side Drive in Geneva. And for full disclosure, I'm a former paid-on-call member of the Geneva Fire Department and was a...I'm a currently retired, full-time firefighter. And I'm speaking today on the proposed budget specifically for public safety in support of what has been proposed. I've heard some comments recently, how, number one, that members like to compare the public service to a business, and I agree to that. It does need to be run like a business, but you need the proper business model, in my opinion. Number one, the stakeholders need to decide the level of service they want provided. And I think most stakeholders in this city agree that the level of service provided currently is fantastic, number one. And number two, you expect a timely response with the right people, with the right training and the right equipment to get the best possible result for that incident. And that goes for police, fire, and public works. I've heard some comments directed towards those who are represented collectively, who collectively bargain, and I know that's an easy narrative in today's public eye, especially with a rather large public union that takes up a lot of attention in our viewing area. However, I specifically would like to bring to the members' attention, which I'm sure you are aware, that the current bargaining unit for the fire department, several times, has been approached by the city and given concessions when it comes to wages or other benefits when it was required according to the economy, number one. Number two, in address to the service level provided, the department provides full-time members and part-time members. And while part-time members play a key part, it is a part. And speaking from, not a bias, I think, but a point of a unique perspective of, number one, as a stakeholder, number two, as a person who's been part-time, and number three, as a person who's been full-time, there's no substitute for that experience of being at the station every day, or whether it's the police or public works. It's vital. It's a profession. It's not a menial task provided by easily interchangeable pieces. They are professionals. When the economy crashed in 2008, there was a call for some, for some people in the private sector, especially in the banking industry, to have their salary capped, and the response to that was, you're not going to be able to attract the right people for that position. Well, I know nobody in the fire service who joined it for economic reasons. I think it's very fair and reasonable that they are able to provide a fair living for their family, get fair wages and benefits. And just to speak to the local, specifically outside of the concessions they've made, I was a paid-on-call member when they organized, and I went to the members, the full-time members, and I asked them if they wanted me to step down, since I was a member of a bargaining unit of another department. And they were very, very adamant that they didn't want that to happen. And they didn't want other members who were full-time somewhere else on the department to step down. They are dedicated to this city. They are dedicated to the department. They provide a great service, and I think they deserve all the respect from us and the citizens. And I would like to see the service level stay as it is and maintain their salary and benefits as the way they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to make a comment regarding the proposed 2016-2017 fiscal year budget? Motion by Alderman Kilburg to close the public hearing on the budget, seconded by Alderman Marx. A roll call vote is in order. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Jim Merdecky.
Aye.
Mary Sino.
Aye.
Tom Simonian.
Aye.
Ron Singer.
Aye.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
The hearing is closed. We'll continue on with items of business for tonight's city council meeting. Our first item of business under the council agenda is 3B, which is the retirement announcement of Fire Chief Steve Olson. Chief Olson, you hereby are retiring.
Do you want to come up to the podium, chief?
Not really.
That's the attitude of a soon-to-be-retired...
Little gutsier now.
Tell us how you really feel.
Great article in the paper last week.
Yeah.
That was a good picture. Did you pose for that picture, or was that something that you had just impromptu, or...
It was very impromptu, because the other ones were so bad, we were trying to figure out one that would look decent.
Was the DynaShore effect put on that photo, or was that natural?
The what?
The DynaShore effect. Who's old enough to recall DynaShore? They had the sepia tones, so you looked better.
Oh, nah, that predates me.
That predates...
That's something.
It predates me too, chief, but I'm a man of history. Extraordinary career.
Yeah, looking back at it now, it's...when I remember the day I walked into the station and looking back at it now, it seems like it was just last week. And I never...when I did that, it was because I was just bored, and I wanted something to do here in Geneva. At that time, the population was 9,000, and there wasn't a lot to do. And actually, that summer, I was working with the daughter of the Assistant Fire Chief at the time. And so she was sharing some stories about it, and I thought this sounded like a little...like fun. So I went down and got an application from then-Captain Frank Johnson, who later became Chief Frank Johnson. And that was my first introduction into the department.
So what else were you doing, though, prior to joining the fire service?
I was a sophomore at Aurora College, and I was working for, some of you might remember this, Jerry Ogden at the Village Decorator, which is now where Special Delivery is, the paint store. That's how I paid my tuition. I worked at the paint store.
No kidding.
So I worked there, and then I became a pair...I started working for Tri-City Ambulance up at Delnor, became one of the first paramedics here in the Tri-Cities. I went to school. At that time, it was three months, three and a half months of class.
Wow.
Now these...the younger guys are going through it.
They're all laughing about that, by the way.
Yeah, there's some of the guys, it's two and a half years now, and it's a college-level course. So things have changed dramatically in the EMS side. Anything we do, EMS has probably changed the most. Then after about five years, I was hired full-time, and way we went. So I was the second full-time person hired by the city as a firefighter. Frank was the first.
Sure, sure.
And after that came Jerry Koster, Scott Spencer, and then a whole cast of us.
They're all here, it looks like.
Yeah, well, a lot of them, which is really cool.
Is it that they're happy to see you go, or is it that they're here to celebrate?
I'm not sure.
Remember, Mayor Harrington?
Burt Wood was the first one.
Burt Wood, no kidding?
Yeah. Burt was the first. Ed Crane...I don't know, we won't go through that now, but yeah. But Burt was the mayor when I joined. And there's stories about that, but anyway. So...
Mrs. Olson and your beautiful daughters, of course, grew up with you in this role?
Yep. All three girls went to fires with me. When you have young kids, and back then you want to do this now, cover your hair, Stephanie?
Yeah, I was gonna say, this could be a...
There was a car seat in the back of the car that I had, and there was times where Emma would...our oldest, he's 28 now, would be in the backseat reading a book while I'd be going to a call, because I was on call. I had to take her with.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. He did that kind of stuff. So all three girls were on calls with us. You don't do that now, of course, but that's what the department was small enough, that's what you did. So they've all grown up with it. They know what the tones sound like. They could tell you who's going. Sometimes a distraction where they'll turn it off when they're not supposed to.
Wow. What's your most memorable experience?
Wow.
Good or bad, I mean, or challenging, I should say. I know you've seen a lot. I know the Kaiser's fire was, of course, perhaps most notable for a lot of reasons.
You tend to think of the calls that were the near misses, and the ones that Kaiser's was definitely one of them. The Baird and Warner fire, which was right next to the Traveler, it was a Baird and Warner real estate business, and fire had been burning for quite some time, and we had the roof collapse underneath us. I don't know if any of the guys here were on that call, but the roof went down on us. The guy was getting lost inside. We had to get him out. You know, bad vehicle accidents, train accidents, hazardous material spills, the gamut. So there's probably for other times to talk about those kind of calls. The good times are the people I've worked with. I've worked with some just stellar firefighters, men and women, and I've been so fortunate to have them. The department is good because of them, of these folks behind me and everybody who's not here, and I want to emphasize that with the council, especially as you start to talk about changes in the future. You've got a very good department, and I mean that for my heart. And this is the heart and soul of it right here. So keep that in mind.
What makes a chief a chief? Now, when you were approached to serve as chief, did you hesitate for any moment at all?
No, and I sort of afterward, after I said yes, I go, I don't know. And you're ready for the job, but then you're not. So you get into the job, and it was probably two years, three years before I felt like I actually knew what I was doing, and I'd been preparing for it. But there's a lot...it's a lot different from being below the position, saying, well, if I were chief, this is what I would do. But then when you are the chief, then it was...you are making the decision. And so it took the first couple...it took me three years, I think, before I felt comfortable with it. It's...I've tried very hard to keep an open door to...for people to feel comfortable coming in to talk to me. Tried to be open sometimes, not always perfect on that, but I've tried hard to do that. Tried to encourage our younger members through the years to pursue education and to pursue their careers in the fire service. I've tried to mentor people gently, sometimes forcefully, but we have a number of people who are on...who are on the department now who started with us as paid-on-call, and we have a number who are out, have careers in other agency, other fire departments, full-time fire departments. So they started out as volunteers and paid-on-call, and then they've gone on to outstanding careers. So that's pretty cool to see. If I had anything to draw back from, I take a little pride in that, that there's people out in the fire service that started with us as 18, 19-year-old paid-on-call members, and then they became certified, they learned how to become a paramedic, they developed their skills, they weren't competitively tested, and now they're pursuing their careers in other agencies. Some of them, I wish they'd been able to stay with us, but you know, that's nature of the beast. But that also, that model, that paid-on-call model helps keep us young, keeps our organization vital. And it never ceases to amaze me, and I'll come in on Mondays, and I'll hear stories of stuff that happened over the weekend, and go, my gosh, that happened 25 years ago. You know, it's the same...it's the same type of funny stories and that, and that's the kind of stuff I'll miss, but miss very fondly.
You talked about mentoring other firefighters. Who has and who continues to mentor you, besides Beth?
Regularly. I actually, I learned from some of the older members of the department or some of my closest advisors. You know, I'll say, what do you think about this? And they give me their counsel. Mike Antonori, who you're going to hope...who's here tonight, Mike has been one of my muses. Call up and say, here's something I've got going, how would you do this? Outside of department, Chief Bill Kidwell, he became...we became friends after a period of time. It took a while to develop a relationship with him, but he was very helpful. Chief Larry Swanson from St. Charles, he's probably my biggest mentor. He was incredibly patient with me when I first became chief and would spend time on the phone, and he wouldn't tell you what to do, he'd say, here are your options. What would you like to do? I learned a lot from him. So I've had a lot of people in my career that have helped me along the way. I've been very fortunate in that sense, very fortunate. Just the right people at the right time, the door just opens and it works. So it's been good.
So you've opted to stick around for yet one more Swedish Days?
Yes. We've got a few things that we're going to finish up in June, and actually tell the council about it tonight.
The accreditation's exciting.
Yeah. We're going to be signed for our fifth...it'll be our fourth site visit, well, four evaluators in the fire service coming in the week of June 12 to evaluate the department, hopefully to be reaccredited for another five years. We've been working for about two years now on having Tri-City Ambulance become an accredited ambulance service. And Rich and Ron know about that because they're on the Tri-City Ambulance Board. Will be one of the very few fire service-based ambulance services that'll be accredited. We think that will be successful in June, and we're...we can't say with 100%, but we're fairly confident that we're going to be able to improve our ISO classification from a three to a two. So that's all going on in June. So that'll be my...the ball on the career, get that done.
A lot of professions have formal, but sometimes private ceremonies where, when someone steps down, there's a...well, I guess a ceremony. Is there a ceremony for a fire chief when he or she steps aside? Is it a resting of the helmet on the fire foot? Is it...or just run like...
Disappear quietly into the night. That's my style. I don't know. I'm not familiar with it. That might be true in some departments.
Just curious, okay.
There's some...some departments I'm aware of have some...have a formal ceremony, but we don't have that many retirements. We are going to be shortly.
Sure.
We've had two already, and mine, and then we got a couple more coming down the road. So that's a tradition that probably the Geneva Fire Department needs to develop.
So what do you do day one of your retirement?
Well, I'm taking my wife to see James Taylor at Wrigley Field. It's a birthday present. I'll be working, teaching and consulting. I've already been asked by several organizations to do that. So I'll be teaching at the National Fire Academy in Maryland, and then around the country for the department's wanting to become accredited, and then also assisting agencies who want to go through the evaluation is helping them out with strategic plans and the like.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah. And it'll be on my schedule. So I can travel as much as I want, stay home, you know.
Wow.
So that'll keep me off the streets for a while.
That's right. Open it up to the dais, of course. Alderman Singer, Alderman Bruno.
I just want to acknowledge the manner in which you function in your capacity as a chief, and not only that, but I think just as one who has been very knowledgeable in the area and the expertise that you've achieved and disseminated that knowledge, and I don't know if you realize how well-respected you are, not only in this community, but beyond, and how you are looked upon for a great deal of guidance and mentorship because of your knowledge and the manner in which you function as a chief. What I've always admired about you is not only that, but a sense that you're such a personal person as well, and you're so easy to talk to and have a conversation with, and that's always been something I've admired about you. I've looked upon you at many times for advice and direction, and you've always been very, very fine and very knowledgeable in the sense of being able to set me in the right direction. I appreciate that very much. I have one question to ask of you. Of all the years you've served as our chief, what do you feel that is one of the most achieving accomplishments that you've been...we could say that you've been successful with?
Some departments, when they're paid-on-call and volunteer, and they transition to career with career firefighters, run into a lot of rough waters. It's a difficult transition, and it wasn't the easiest one for us as we added career staff. And we were successful in maneuvering through that, and that was a hard process. It was real...it was very real growing pains, and there were lots of accusations that went back and forth about what would happen, what would not happen. And I think we came out successfully. And a lot of that, again, I'm going to point back to the folks that are back here, especially some of the older members. They were just pivotal in making that happen, to making people feel part of the group. We've been able to integrate three diverse working groups: career firefighters, labor, paid-on-call firefighters, part-time, and then private contractual. And if you look at...and there's a mix here in the room tonight, and they're all equal, they're all the same, they're all part of the same team, and I've always tried to treat them that way and respect them for that. And if, I guess, when you talk about accomplishments, and I think more about it as I think more...that's probably since one of the things I'm very proud of is that we've maintained that. You know, I've just been fortunate. With few exceptions, I've had just outstanding people on the department.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I just wanted to thank you for your exemplary service. I started to lean on you with regards to TRICOM, and now you're bailing on me, so I'm...but I appreciated the tutelage in that arena, and I look forward to working with your successor. And do you have to turn those things in your collar in, or do you get to keep them?
Mike could wear them if he wants. There have been times I've offered to let some of the people who work for me wear them.
Oh, is that right?
So you try them for a day. So, yeah. I'm very confident that the man who's replacing me will do an excellent job. He will take the department to great places.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the dais? Alderman Kilburg and Alderman Merdecky?
Chief, I want to thank you for your service, and I think your service as chief obviously is recognized by everyone. You've done an outstanding job over a lengthy career, and I think, as a side note, I think that your contribution to the community in other ways shouldn't go unrecognized as well. And I know that you're involved...you've been involved in a lot of different activities to support the community, and I know your parents and your brother have passed on, but if they were here tonight, I know that they'd be extremely proud of what you've accomplished in serving the community, and it'll be a little odd around here without an Olson present, but thanks, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, neighbor.
Thank you.
Alderman Merdecky.
Well, speaking of all of your service to the community outside of your current role, there's a question I've wanted to ask you for a while.
Uh-oh.
What do you find more frightening, running into a burning building or doing Geneva Dancing with the Stars?
Dancing with the Stars.
Okay, thank you. That's a lot.
We actually have that video.
A member of the council at that...who's a member of the council, he's not there now, came over to the office one day and said, you know, my wife and I did it, and we...you ought to do it. Good time, you ought to do that. And, you know, he convinced me. He was a salesman, he got me. So I bent my better judgment and said yes. And then after we went through the whole thing, I saw him afterwards, and he said, boy, I would never do that again. I said...fortunately, many of the members didn't see what I looked like that night, so that's good, too.
It's on YouTube.
Uh, ixne.
Ixne on YouTube. Chief, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And please give our love and our appreciation to Beth and the girls.
Will do that.
For their sacrifice and their contribution as well.
Yeah, thank you.
So we have you till June 30th.
Yep.
So we expect to see you at Kids' Day at Swedish Days.
I will probably be there, I think. Haven't seen what the schedule looks like yet.
Yeah, well, we'll see.
So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Chief, did you notice all the young guys were clapping longer, just in case, I mean... God, we do have a video, don't we? Who's the guy in the back that hit the button for the screen? It's like... Commander Nash, you're right, those firefighters are a little... Item 3C is to consider the appointment of Michael Antonori to Fire Chief for the City of Geneva Fire Department effective August 8, 2016.
So moved.
Motion by Marx, seconded by Sino. Any questions or comments? A roll call vote would be appropriate. Mr. Clerk, if I may trouble you?
Jim Merdecky.
Aye.
Mary Sino.
Aye.
Tom Simonian.
Aye.
Ron Singer.
Aye.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Easy breezy, Mr. Antonori.
Oh, no, now you've got to come to the podium.
Now you've got to come to the podium. And remember what we talked about.
I'll try.
Mayor, city administrator, Alderman, thank you very much for your support. I have a few folks to thank in the room here. First and foremost, my wife, who has approved this career change. She's lived with me for 20 years as a part-time firefighter, and she is not looking forward to the fact I'll be home every night now, so, because I won't be staying the night.
Because your life now, you are a busy man. You are on the road.
I travel a lot, and then I come home and then spend the weekend at the fire department. So she's not sure what she's going to do, or I'm not sure what I'm going to be doing to get out of her hair. So thank you for your support, support of the chiefs, the memberships that have put up with me for 20 years, learning how to be a fireman. I started when I was 34 years old with a bunch of 18-year-olds. Made it, figured it out, tried not to get killed, getting close once, but all joking aside, I'm excited. I've spent 33 years at my other employment. I have to make a phone call tonight and announce my retirement, so it's a bittersw...
Mayor, City Administrator Alderman, thank you very much for your support. I have a few folks to thank in the room here. First and foremost, my wife, who has approved this career change. She's lived with me for 20 years as a part-time firefighter, and she is not looking forward to the fact I'll be home every night now, so, because I won't be staying the night.
Because your life now, you are a busy man, you are on the road.
I travel a lot, and then I come home and then spend the weekend at the fire department, so she's not sure what she's going to do. Or I'm not sure what I'm going to be doing to get out of her hair, so, thank you for your support, support of the chiefs, the memberships that have put up with me for 20 years, learning how to be a fireman. I started when I was 34-years-old with a bunch of 18-year-olds. Made it, figured it out, tried not to get killed, getting close once, but all joking aside, I'm excited. I've spent 33 years at my other employment. I have to make a phone call tonight and announce my retirement, so it's a bittersweet. Made a lot of friends, but I'm looking forward to the challenges, looking forward to the service. I'm a Fox Valley resident, I grew up in Elgin, went away for a bit, we came back here 24 years ago and considered this home, so, very excited, looking forward to working with you, and looking forward to get to know all you. And got four weeks, four months of finishing up the other job, and Chief and I will be meeting quite often and working on the transition, so appreciate your support, so thank you.
Thank you for, you know, I think most of these, or not most, excuse me, I think these men and women who are here tonight not only to celebrate the chief, but to also welcome you aboard.
Hope so.
Now, you take over August 8th. What's historical about August 8th?
August 8th is the first Monday after I turned 55.
Oh, no, I wasn't, is that right?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know that.
That's not very historical, maybe, but...
No, I didn't.
Oh, you mean in history?
Well, yeah, just something local. All you baseball fans should know this.
Well, first night game, I don't even...
Close, it was the first scheduled night game, but it was a rainout.
Right.
So they had it August 9th.
And I'm, I call myself a Cubs fan, so...
Are you a Cubs fan?
Yes, I will admit to that.
Wow. That's something.
But it was also the first Monday after I turned 55, so...
So, so your birthday's a Saturday this year.
Tuesday.
What?
Tuesday.
Is it Tuesday, Mr. Clerk?
August 2nd is a Tuesday, I believe.
Oh, it is August 2nd, I thought, I was thinking August 6th, excuse me.
No, it's okay.
This is going to be a great relationship. Soon to be chief?
Not quite yet, Chief, yeah.
You have two grown children?
Yes, I have a 27-year-old daughter, Ashley, who lives in Chicago, down in Lincoln Park, working at not her final job, but she is being processed right now to be a member of the, one of the new, this upcoming classes for the Chicago Police Department as a patrol officer.
Isn't that something?
So, we have something in common. She is intent on that. She got, and then I have a son who is 24 at the University of Kentucky, in a month, graduating, finishing up in a hotel and hospitality degree, and hopefully finds full-time employment soon, so, they're both gone, though, but still being supported.
Yeah, well, absolutely. And what do they think about your new career move?
They're very excited. They're both basically raised here. They, we moved here when they were three weeks and three months old, so they know nothing other than Geneva, but they're very excited. We actually haven't really talked to my son much about it, but my daughter figured it out somehow. So, but we'll be getting a phone call tonight and let them know, so...
Are they aware that no more car seats in the chief's car?
I was going to say that, you don't have to worry about that.
That's true, okay.
Because they are grown adults.
Way to go, chief.
Father-in-law lives in Batavia, he's probably the most excited.
No kidding.
And my mom lives up in Huntley, and she's been chomping a bit to tell people, so I have to give her a call later and say it's okay to tell people now, so, she's looking forward to that, so...
That's very exciting. And Mary, I know that Mike had a good conversation with you about this next move.
Yes, he did.
I know you're equally as excited.
I am thrilled, and it would be very nice to have him around the house.
Oh, good one.
A lot of painting and tiling coming up, so...
On the honeydew list.
Yep.
Paid-on firemen don't do that.
We're very proud of you as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Antonori, I should say Lieutenant Antonori. You are a rank of lieutenant, and the council, of course, has seen your credentials as well, so you bring extraordinary breadth and depth of experience, and we're just delighted that you've accepted the opportunity to serve, and I'm certain that the men and women here as well are equally as excited, so...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This next item is really cool, folks. The American Public Works Association Chicago Chapter Project of the Year Award, recognition for the Third Street Commuter Parking Deck Expansion Project. Did anybody watch the Country Music Awards last night? Pales in comparison to this. Mr. Schreiber, are you accepting this award on behalf of the community, or is Mr. Babica?
I'm going to give you the award, sir.
I know it is. Here he is, folks. Our city engineer and the Assistant Director of Public Works, Mr. Brian Schreiber. A man of few words. Mr. Schreiber has represented the City of Geneva in the public works field in the last two rounds of this competition, and we've won both rounds, which is very exciting, and now we compete in the national level.
That's correct.
Which is in the Twin Cities, and I know you'll be up there to lobby for votes and what have you, and very exciting, isn't it?
Whatever it takes.
Enthusiasm is just overwhelming. Where is this parking deck, Mr. Schreiber?
South in the Third Street.
With, not without its challenges, correct?
It did have quite a few challenges, and I think that's what this award is all about. It's, this was certainly not an individual award on acknowledging my efforts, this was a true team effort across the board with all the city departments, coordination, cooperation with the other outside agencies like Metra, PACE, the church, the park district, you know, there was a lot of agencies involved with getting this project completed, and that's what this award is acknowledging, is all that cooperation and coordination.
Well said. So to build a facility like that, to put a third, to click a third story on top of it, seems easy.
It does. Seems easy.
It seems easy.
Yeah.
Were there times when you thought, holy moly, what have we done?
Yeah, there was times where I was wanting to be away for the weekend.
Yeah?
But it went off and went, went very well, all things considered, and I think that's what this award acknowledges then, is that we took a difficult job, and with the cooperation and coordination, we made it easy.
And it's important for everyone to understand that the folks who vote on this award are those in the industry.
That's correct.
So it's not just someone who finds it attractive, or useful, or convenient, it's folks in the industry who know the challenges that you had to undertake and your team had to undertake in order to make it successful.
That's correct.
Well, we have a surprise for you tonight, Mr. Schreiber, we're actually engraving your image.
In the mechanical room, right?
We'd have to lower the parking fee, wouldn't we?
Lower?
Lower what?
Is that what you're giving us?
May I present this to you formally?
Sure.
Have a good, you have a camera ready?
Nice back shot. Nice back shot.
I was trying to get it before they turned around.
Thank you.
You ready? Do you want to be in this?
No.
Okay. Congratulations. Is it? Good work, guys.
Brian, thank you very much. Now, this gentleman spoke at the luncheons as well, which is, to say the least, a huge task for Mr. Schreiber, because he's not one to stand in the spotlight, but you and your team deserve the credit, and you represent them well, and of course, we wish you well in Minneapolis. That's a tough one there, Clerk. Way to go, Schreiber. Amendments to the agenda, are there any amendments this evening, ladies and gentlemen? I have one, and that is to remove the closed session. I guess I could have done that on just a friendly amendment, but... Is anything else on the amendments? Item 5 is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this city council and can be considered and acted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Marks makes the motion, Alderman Bruno makes the second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simmonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilberg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
We jump to item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Bills for payment total $499,234.76.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve and pay the bills as read, the individual items that add up, add up to that total can be found in tonight's packet on the Geneva website.
The motion by Bruno to approve the bills as read, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marks. Any questions or comments regarding the bills as presented? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simmonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilberg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item 11A. 11A is to approve Resolution Number 2016-20, adopting fiscal year 2016, 2017, general fund, electric, water, wastewater, capital, miscellaneous, TRICOM, and classification and compensation plan. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Marks?
Second.
Seconded by Bruno. All right. First, let me thank Alderman Kilberg for a yeoman's work last week of getting us through a lot of the issues, so we appreciate that very much. Tonight, we have several issues that I, I think I may have outlined, or I know I outlined them, but hopefully I outlined them well with respect to some of the outstanding issues we still have to consider, but first, perhaps we should begin with, are there any issues that any of you have on your mind with respect to the budgets as enumerated? Alderman Simmonian.
Thank you, Mayor. As promised, I wasn't here last week, but I, the prior week, I promised that I would, when the...
Tom, turn your mic on, please.
It's on.
Thank you. Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Not lit up?
No. We're good, okay, thank you.
The, when the anonymous letter that the mayor read, I made a comment that I received a bunch of letters as well, and so I want to share a couple of those letters with you. I'm sharing, I tried to pull the ones out that did not call out any aldermen or comments regarding specific aldermen, and for those, I suggested those folks contact those aldermen, those city folks, the mayor directly, and voice their, their opinions. After that meeting, I wrote a letter to the department heads as well. I tried to send it to every one of the city employees, but unfortunately, I, as an elected official, didn't have permission to send an email to all the city staff, which was interesting to me, but I want to read that into the record. I could only hope that the department heads pass this along as I requested to all the It says to all, "As you all may or may not know, I'm not a career and/or seasoned politician, so political correctness is not a trait I handle very well. I don't apologize for it, but sometimes what I say, what I mean, and what is construed doesn't always align. I made some comments in Monday night's meeting that I want to explain. It is not at all that I do not care about the city employees. I absolutely do care about our city employees. I want you to know that I value, appreciate, and acknowledge your high-quality service, and although we are financially challenged right now, it's never been about what all of you do and the great services you provide. What you do know about me is what you may see, hear once a week at meetings, what you hear from others who don't know me. What you don't know is what it's like to work for me. There are two things I was trying to communicate to the council. One, as an elected officials, our first responsibility is to the citizens of Geneva who elect us as the fiduciaries and stewards of their thoughts, requests, concerns, taxpayer dollars. And two, what I'm trying to accomplish is to save city employees' jobs in the future by everyone sacrificing a little now to avoid some employees having to be sacrificed in the future by losing their jobs. I hope we're all adult enough to realize that government doesn't exist purely for the benefit of government workers. I believe we pay and treat our staff very fair, and we focus our efforts on delivering service value and safety to the public for their tax dollars. Over the past few years, we've seen wages and benefits rise while services are either cut or costs increase. All this with the future threat of the state, of a state that may or may not cut monies owed to our city, a state that may or may not continue to pass along unfunded mandates, a state that may or may not freeze property taxes, a state that may or may not file for bankruptcy. One thing is for sure, things are going to change, and not for the better. If this, if this was your household and your revenues were threatened to be reduced and your expenses continued to increase, and your annual budget got larger and larger each year, would you not want to protect the future by being proactive versus reactive? That is exactly what I'm trying to accomplish. No one said it was going to be easy and painless, but I am determined to do it together, and for it to be fair. All that said, if, if I in any way made you feel that I do not care and am not thankful for all you do for the City of Geneva and its citizens, I humbly apologize. That was in no way what I even remotely meant or intended. I hope that you will accept my apology, and if not, I understand. I will also share this email with the public on April 4th during the city council meeting, which I'm doing now, with a healthy disrespect for the impossible, from me." And I'd like to read a couple of letters into the record that were sent to me, and I will, I will provide you with their names, and their names are not anonymous. Hi, Tom, please feel free to share this email message with your fellow aldermen and anyone you wish. I'd like to thank you and your fellow aldermen for the work you're trying to do to get the budget back under control. For the past few years, the budget has been growing at an alarming rate while the tax base has been shrinking. The proposed budget in 2010, 2011 called for approximately $63 million in revenue and $66 million in expenses. The proposed budget for this year is just shy of $92 million in revenues, and slightly less than that in expenses. In six years, the budget has increased almost $30 million, despite a hiring freeze, furlough days, and service cutbacks. The fact that the budget is balanced is cold comfort when we are paying more for electric, sewer, water, trash pickup, and taxes. When we first moved to Geneva, we had free trash pickup twice a week during the summer months, more frequent brush pickup, side streets were plowed and salted in the winter, our electric rates were the envy of the, of every suburb, and the city prided itself on keeping the lid on tax increases. Now we're cutting back on services, raising our service rates every year, increasing the tax levy every year, and our equipment is aging and in need of replacement. The most recent service casualty was the electronics drop-off box. We all understand the economy is recovering slowly, and in Illinois, it's really a mess. We're in a bad situation, and while we can't avoid the pain, we can and should attempt to share it in it equally. I assume that is what the "today, tomorrow, together" slogan in this year's proposed budget means, or should mean, and that it's also the basis of Alderman Simmonian's quest to make the budget fair. The mayor suggested that the time for Alderman to address budget issues should have been during the '35 or '34 budget meetings staff has had. There are a couple of problems with that theory. The first is that the meetings are not scheduled for the convenience of the aldermen, many of whom would have to take time off for their regular jobs to attend. Secondly, those 35 meetings become 140 meetings when they have to be scheduled to accommodate groups of three or fewer aldermen to avoid violating the Open Meetings Act. That would be a scheduling nightmare and a terrible ordeal for staff. The process needs to change. As Alderman Rodecky recommended, if we don't want to face the same problems each year, the Wednesday budget meetings the mayor suggested at the last city council meeting are a step in the right direction, I think, but there are other problems, too. When the city adminis, the city assistant, when the assistant city administrator has to explain what is and what isn't in the budget figure, or why parts of a budget amount don't really fit the category, or when the mayor and aldermen have radically different numbers for the same budget items, it's a failure in the budget reporting process that a boatload of budget presentation awards is not going to fix. We just purchased five, a $500,000 accounting system and pay almost 5,600 per year to maintain it. We should be able to produce clear and comprehensible reports that tell us exactly what we expect to or will be taking in and spending and where. There should be no confusion, and if there is, we need to find ways to fix it. The OMB describes the federal budget figures in an appendix of the budget document. That information should be available to the aldermen and the public. In the age of big data and with all the technology available, aldermen should be able to drill down in the budget to find whatever contributing figures they need to know to determine exactly what a number of the budget, a number on the budget represents. Budget has to be a useful planning tool for both staff and elected officials, needs to be clear and consistent to aid in the analysis of trends in costs and running a city. Additionally, the budget process should not be seen as an opportunity to pit staff against city council. It's rather disingenuous and a failure of leadership to suggest that council members are acting with ulterior motives, or that taking their fiduciary responsibility seriously is an affront to staff. We all need to be adults about the situation. The focus of the council and the staff should be on public service. Both have different roles, but the goals are the same. It's generally a thankless job for both staff and elected officials. No one involved in public service is getting a lot of fan letters. I suggest that the city employee who wrote the anonymous letter the mayor read, that if he or she really wants to feel loved and appreciated, then a career in public service couldn't be more inappropriate. You need to really think, you need to be really thick-skinned to survive in this field. I think in general, however, the community is satisfied with the job that staff and the elected officials are doing. I think our employees are well-compensated, have great benefits, and have great working conditions. I recall going to police station in Florida when Dorothy's sister passed away and thinking with a dump, what a dump it was, especially in comparison to our own police and fire facilities. I don't think we have anything to be ashamed about in the way our employees are treated. Many of our regular firefighters are being paid as much as lieutenants and even captains in the New York City Fire Department. Our employees have excellent health insurance, dental insurance, vision insurance, life insurance, and pension benefits. For some time now, not just this year, the aldermen have been asking to take a look at reducing the cost of benefits, not cutting them. They want to look into possible greater employee contributions for insurance plans in a tiered structure so as not to cause undue hardship for lower-paid employees. They've also stated that they do not want to cut jobs, but they do want to reduce the strain on the budget. For the mayor to suggest the council is creating a hostile work environment is ludicrous on the face of it. In anecdotal evidence of how things should be done, he talked about how we all celebrated the fact that the fire department had agreed to provide some contractual relief for pay raises by forfeiting a contractual pay raise, but that doesn't tell the full story. At the April eighteenth, twenty-eleven meeting of the city council, a side letter agreement with the union was approved that essentially deferred, not forfeited, one-point-seven-five percent of their bargain, three-point-seven-five percent wage agreement until the last period of the fiscal year in exchange for no layoffs in fiscal year twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve. The approximate savings to the city was twenty-two thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. That agreement was in keeping with the council's desire and department's wishes to avoid layoffs. This was not a one-sided concession, as the mayor's comments imply. Furthermore, in July twenty-fourteen, the council agreed to a reorganization of the fire department and a move that would create and fill the positions of fire marshal and two battalion chiefs, fill the vacant battalion chief position, and eliminate one of the deputy chief positions held by one of the retiring deputy chiefs. According to officials, as reported in the Kane County Chronicle, the reorganization would cost the city an additional two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars annually. After scouring the internet, looking for some standards that apply to these positions, the best I could determine was the battalion chief is generally responsible for a battalion, which covers three to five fire stations. We have two. I don't know whether these positions are a necessity or a luxury, but the fire chief said they were needed and long overdue, and the council accommodated his request. Have we created a hostile work environment? I don't think so. We have, however, created an expensive one, and growing more expensive every year. I think we need to put on the brakes and figure out just where we're going first before we continue careening down this road. If we don't, we're going to have to continue scratching for additional revenue sources, placing a greater burden on businesses and taxpayers, and creating a hostile environment for our stakeholders in the process. Finally, I'd like to add my agreement to Alderman Simonian's suggestion that we obtain outside legal counsel to negotiate union contracts. The unions write the contracts and send seasoned professionals to the negotiating table. The process has become something more akin to a hostage negotiation than a bargaining agreement. Our position is somewhat weakened by the threat that we either accept union terms or face the grim and expensive process of arbitration in which we are likely to lose. It makes sense to have an outsider rather than a member of the team negotiate with the team on behalf of the owner. Whether there is a statutory conflict or not, it's a difficult situation that might be handled more effectively by someone on the outside. We could also take the opportunity to approach our neighboring towns about working together to obtain legal counsel that specializes in labor contract negotiations to help all of us out. Our objective should be to negotiate a fair contract for employees that is affordable to the citizens of Geneva and doesn't break our budget. As for the criticism that this would require hiring an outside attorney, we do that in many instances already presumably to provide some expertise we don't have in-house. The bills for payment on March twenty-first included sixteen thousand, thirty-five dollars for legal fees, not including the fees charged by our city attorney, so there is precedent. Thanks for taking the time to read my comments, and please keep up the good work. Regards, Terry Flanagan, one oh-two Brookfield Lane. And then I have some added pages to that. This is when I received, ladies and gentlemen, Alderman Simonian, thank you for exercising your responsibility to be a good steward of the taxpayers' money. Thank you, Alderman Simonian, for bringing up the eight-hundred-pound elephant in the room, the unsustainable pensions, contracts, and expenses that one day will devour us if we don't change how things are done now. We can't tax ourselves into continued solvency, as some would choose, such as sales tax hikes, sales tax hikes, and restaurant tax, et cetera. It is time for reform and change. State after state, city after city face these same challenges, but yet offer no plan or solution for the future. Businesses discovered long ago that pension funds are an unsustainable pyramid game, and yet government bodies think they can do it better. The benefit packages need to be open for negotiation as well. This is not about the taxpayers versus the city employees. Few, if any, would say the city employees aren't dedicated and doing a great job. This is about being fiscally responsible and making sure Geneva can continue to employ these people in the future. I applaud Alderman Simonian's courage to bring frank and open discussion of this subject to the forefront. It should not be a behind-closed-doors topic, as the mayor has been quoted for saying. The time for change is now. Let's show Illinois and the country that we can be accomplished with some ingenuity, compromise, and shared accountability. It will be challenging, but very rewarding. I was disappointed that anonymous letters allegedly from city employees were allowed to be read into the records. I would akin that to quoting a submission from the Kane County Chronicle's sound-off section. If there is not a name on it, then it is not worth the paper it is written on. This was beneath the stature of the council to allow that to happen. It just can't be business as usual. Today, we are comfortable with the way things are, but we cannot be complacent. The can we continue to kick down the road is beginning to look like a fifty-five-gallon oil drum. Thank you for all your service and dedication. Dick Graff, First Ward, five oh-two Charles Street. And I've got a number of others, but I'm not going to read them or share them. And like I said, any of the ones that had individuals' specific names on them, I've asked them to, aldermen's names, I've asked them to forward to the alderman. And because quite honestly, if city employees, you've got a bone to pick with me, send a letter to me. I don't know why you're sending it to other people. I'd be more than happy to address it. And I'm the one that's creating the fly in the ointment, so I'm here. If you'd like to talk, or you'd like to send a letter, I'd be more than happy to accommodate. I'd like to address, Mayor, some of your comments to my comments on-
Sure.
-fund, budget fund facts, and fund, F-U-N-D, not F-U-N. I'm going to read your response, and then I'm going to read my response. The first one is about the general fund operation reserves. Your response to my numbers was, "The statistics cited is misleading, as the reserve number will reflect audited financial statements from fiscal year to fiscal year based on budget." My response is, "The statistic is not misleading. It is actually very straightforward. When you go from one-hundred-and-six days to seventy-nine days, it represents twenty-five-point-four-seven percent decrease." Of course, I'm using the math I was taught way back when. Maybe the new math gets you to a different number. Since you want to use the word, use the term misleading with my calculations, how misleading is it when you make the statement about pay raises? Your quote, "Look at the numbers presented. We are looking at some one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand budgeted for the highest amount of paid for performance. Let's round it up to one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand. Hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar budget out of a ninety-million budget is less than zero-point-one-seven percent of that budget, identical to the discussion we had five years ago, and identical to the discussion we had ten years ago," end quote. Comparing any amount against the ninety-million is misleading. You should compare the one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand to the total amount of salaries it is being applied to. This will give you a true, not misleading, percent increase. Since I was not privileged to receive that total salary that applies to the one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar raises, I have no way of giving an accurate percentage of what that rate, what that percentage is in comparison to raises, in comparison to the total salaries. With regards to the ninety-day, we strive for ninety days, to maintain ninety days of reserve. Bless you. Your response was, "The fund balance was reduced fiscal twenty-fourteen, fifteen for the Fourth Street property purchase. Using general fund reserves was understood and approved by the city council." I was not talking about the twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen. I was talking about the proposed budget for twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen, where we're still budgeting eighty-four days, which is six days short, or six-point-six-seven percent below the city limit that we strive to maintain. The twenty-seventeen proposed budget, this was your response to the overtime. The twenty-seventeen proposed budget for police overtime line item is three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty dollars, which includes double-time field training officer, officer pay, holiday pay, officer-in-charge pay, and Medicare. Removing the Medicare and non-overtime equals, as it gets moved to a different line item upon passage, five-point-seven percent increase over fiscal year twenty-fifteen. In other words, this line item includes more than overtime. Overtime is not applied to pension calculations. My response, "My numbers also include the exact same line items as you referenced here: double-time, field training officer pay, holiday pay, officer-in-charge pay, and Medicare." So regardless if you examine overtime as a total amount or an item by item, it still comes out the same in total. If overtime is not applied to pension calculations, should we not look into a tri-city, Geneva, St. Charles, Batavia agreement that we use each other's police force for overtime needs at regular hourly wages versus overtime, thus saving all communities a great deal of overtime costs? What about looking into using Kane County Sheriff's officers for overtime at regular pay? What about outsourcing? What about looking into districting? We have one of the most successful districting programs in the country with our tri-city ambulances. Municipalities from around the country contact us about this program. It saves all of us, Geneva, Batavia, and St. Charles, money, and they are outsourced employees, and we do not have to pay their benefits, pensions, workers' comp, insurance, et cetera. What about part-time officers for overtime? Oh, that's right, we can't, because we're not, we're prohibited from doing so in our union contract. Contract I voted against, one of the reasons being this no-part-time clause, which completely handcuffs the city on controlling its budget. I watched last week's video when Alderman Cummings said he had met with Chief Mexon and Commander Nash about overtime, and he was frustrated, but understood, but didn't have any solutions. I just listed, and whether we can do it or not, I don't know, but I don't know that anybody's ever investigated it. The other concern I have is, during his conversation, he had mentioned that a bunch of overtime was earmarked for a murder investigation that we had last year. Well, our last year's estimate for overtime, with all those line items included, is two-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand. We're budgeting three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty dollars this year. I guess my question is, is are we planning on another murder, or two murders, or three? I mean, I don't understand how this, it just boggles my mind how the budget moves sixty-five-thousand when last year supposedly it was heavy because of a murder situation. The group health, the twenty-seventeen, your response, Mayor, the twenty-seventeen proposed budget for group health insurance is two-million-eighty-thousand, eight-fifty-three for all funds, excluding TRICOM, which is an eight-point-nine-four percent increase over FY sixteen estimate. And my response is, I'm using the numbers that were provided to the city council, not numbers that were only provided to you, the mayor. The numbers provided to the city council do not have a breakdown of with or without TRICOM. Since the city council has not given those numbers, I suggest that the budget should reflect group health and dental insurance not to exceed the twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen actual, not budgeted, amount as a maximum amount for those two expenses into the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen budget. Combined pension contributions, your response was, "The city does not determine the pension contributions. Pension contributions are based on an actuarial study as required by state statute. This is a burden passed on to the city of Geneva by Springfield. This is a burden passed on to the city of Geneva by Springfield. City does not have the legal authority to combine these pension funds. Doing otherwise would be illegal." I completely agreed with Alderman Kilburg when he brought that matter up on three fourteen, that's something we don't have control over. We may not have control over the pension contributions, but we may have control over how many full-time hours are used to determine that pension contribution. And we should look into removing that part-time clause, as I had mentioned, from the contracts. We should look at outsourcing. We should look at districting as options to control these inflating costs. With regards to the increasing the general reserve, fund reserves to ninety days, your response was to bring the fund balance to ninety-day reserve. We'd need to decrease expenditures by two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand. This direction must be voted upon by the entire city council. My response is, I would recommend that the council support this direction. With regards to the increase of the capital fund back to a million dollars, you asked which capital fund? General capital fund, and I recommend that council supports this direction as well. Under healthcare, again, as you go down, you responded to my proposal, which was employee contribution is proportionate to employee's compensation, so someone making one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand would pay a higher percentage premium versus someone making fifty thousand. Your response was, "We would need to consider base wages versus combined wages overtime. We have several staff who make more than their respective managers because of overtime. Developing a class system will backfire, provide a distinctive, a disincentive for staff to serve in management roles." And I totally, my response is, I totally disagree. It's not fair for someone making one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand a year to pay the same as someone paying, making thirty thousand a year. You talk about creating a toxic culture and a deflating morale. I can't see how something like that wouldn't be part of it. With regards to the dental insurance, you said the city is self-insured for dental. As such, the third-party administrator provides recommended funding levels. Levels can remain the same rather than taking the recommendation of the TPA. My point is, it makes no difference that we're self-insured. We still have to pay these bills, and we have a budget of what we're proposing to My recommendation to meet with Batavia and St. Charles to agree of sharing in approximately a thirty-thousand-dollar cost, ten thousand per city, to engage a consolidation feasibility Your response was, "The council saw our presentation and discussed this issue at the November twenty-fifteen strategic planning workshop. Consensus of the city council and direction of staff at that time was to not capitalize, not move in this direction due to various reasons, including legal limitations, increased costs of combining union contracts, and losing control of public safety operations." Your words, exactly, "No need to go any further, chief. No need to expend any money. We are not interested in discussing nor reviewing consolidation." That was the will of the council on that day. If this is the absolute, if this is the absolute direction of the city council, then why did we send eight members or professional staff to go to a conference on consolidation and districting? The expert in this field, who has been part of successful districting in municipalities throughout the United States, said the biggest mistake municipalities make is trying to eat the elephant in one bite, when it should be done a piece at a time, starting with the chiefs and upper management first. Once that is in place, then move to the general body, equipment, locations, contracts, et cetera. I believe it is the taxpayer money well-spent by Geneva, Batavia, and St. Charles to consult with the expert and find out the feasibility of consolidation and districting. With regards to no pay raises, my recommendation here, while your response was, "Furthermore, making such statements from the dais with no substantive reason why," is in my- making such statements from the dais with no substantive reason why is, in my opinion, destructive to the efforts of this council and previous councils to develop a mutually respectful relationship with our employees. Pay raises are not automatic but based on performance. And I totally disagree. And I would also recommend that raises based on performance should be based on consumer price index or inflation plus, for example, below expectation receives no pay raises, at expectation receives whatever CPI or inflation is, and above expectation gets that CPI slash inflation plus a certain percentage. And then with regards to the places for eating taxes, you said the authority rests with the majority of the council, and I recommend the council that we remove this line item from the budget and proceed with the half percent citywide tax by referendum for the November election. I know that's one of the things that we're going to discuss tonight. And with regards to the assistant city administrator, you went on and listed all the functions, saying the following functions need to be the responsibility of someone. And my response is, has anyone looked into offering the ACA job responsibilities to our current employees for an increase in salary or restructuring the organizational chart to have finance, IT, and HR report directly to the city administrator versus an assistant city administrator? We can outsource contract negotiations to outside council. I've been totally against since day one on this council, a city employee negotiating a city employee's contract, especially when both parties share the same benefits, health insurance, dental insurance, et cetera. My opinion, this is a conflict of interest, and I'm not buying that it is not a conflict of interest when it is written in their job description or job responsibilities. That's it for now. I'm sure I'll chime in when others chime in. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, council, for bearing with me. And audience.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I would like to, well, I've offered an apology to Alderman Simontian and to the council generally, but I recognized last week when I read the anonymous letter, in the list of letters that I had before me, I grabbed one that had pointed reference to a specific individual, and it was a mistake to read that out loud. I do defend reading anonymous letters in this case, simply because I know the city employees, you know, could put their employment at risk, but I do offer apologies for reading that letter aloud. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Maladra?
That was a lot. And it's going to be difficult to address. A lot of it I agree with, a lot of it I disagree with. So there's a couple of things. So the first thing is there were a number of items that Tom touched on that I consider to be matters of policy, not necessarily, at this point, matters of a specific budget. I think that these are all things that we do need to discuss as a body, and I have suggested, and I believe the mayor suggested, that we set aside time outside of our regularly scheduled Monday meetings to have those discussions. The only reason I say to set aside time outside of these meetings is just because we never seem to get to it otherwise. So I believe that having a commitment to discuss consolidation, to discuss whatever, is an important part of moving this council and this body forward. The matter of employee wages, I want to focus strictly on the employees that are not part of a collective bargaining agreement, because the collective bargaining agreements will address in negotiation with those collective bargaining units. I think that to address those outside of negotiations with the collective bargaining units is probably going to lead us to some sort of unfair labor practice. Mr. Flanagan's letter and many of the comments that I've heard outside of this meeting place a great deal of emphasis on employee wage increases, and they seem to feel that if we address the employee wage increases, we will somehow slay this giant budget dragon that is running amok in the city of Geneva. We are not, how do I put this? As an organization, we are making decisions about how we choose to allocate resources amongst hard assets and soft assets. Soft assets being people, hard assets being equipment like trucks and things of that nature. As a body, if we choose to allocate resources towards soft assets and the total effect of that soft asset allocation is less than 1 percent of the total budget, it seems to me to be a risky proposition to weaken the partnership that we've had with those soft assets in order to save a small fraction of the overall budget. It resonates emotionally outside of this dais, but I have to ask, just in my view, what is accomplished and at what total cost? Not dollar cost, but total cost, actual cost. So although it is something that I believe Alderman Simontian was correct in bringing up and making sure we discuss, I just want to go on record as saying that, in my mind, that's not a path that I would take because the total cost is greater than what I believe the total savings would be. The matter of benefits comes up over and over again. I'll say it again. I believe that that matter was decided. I think it was decided a long time ago. We have not heard back. I made a mention a few meetings ago that it was never my thought that we would go back to our employees in the middle of a fiscal year and say, guess what, we're cutting your benefits. I figured that that would be something we would do when the next fiscal year kicked in, and so the fact that we haven't heard anything from our insurance broker up to this point didn't worry me. And I still say I think that that's something that we're going to do, so I don't know why we're spending so much time on that. So I'm sort of a, I'm sort of a simple guy. We have, we have big policy issues that we must address, and we've had trouble addressing up to this point, and we have a budget that we need to pass because we don't want to be like the state where we're arguing about approving a budget for a year when we haven't even really approved the budget for the previous year. I would like to hang my hat on the commitment that we had from the mayor to schedule time for those policy issues to be discussed. I would like to move forward on the budget somehow, in my perspective, of the issues that are outstanding, that do not fall under matters of policy. We have the budget issue, which, as I said, I think was actually decided several months ago. We have the wage issue, which, as I said, I would not support. And I believe that's it. So if we could separate the budget issues from the policy issues, agree to address the policy issues in an expedient manner by scheduling meetings outside of this Monday thing, I think the body can move forward. Thank you.
Anyone else in the dais? If no one objects, Alderman Cummings, excuse me.
I said a quick comment on that last commentary. I want to be sure that nobody is assuming that when I mention cutting insurance costs, that I'm talking, that I am equating that with cutting insurance benefits. As we all know, we can go out there in the world and see two different prices for the same thing, and until that thing and its price are examined, I don't know whether we're getting a good price. And when I see a thing inflate by X percent, that's arguable, 19.8 percent, 5.7, 9, when I see a thing inflate by a certain amount, I wonder if I can get that thing for the original price that I saw it at. And whether I'm going to Home Depot or I'm buying insurance for my car, that's how I look at things. So I, again, don't equate my comments of cutting insurance costs with cutting insurance benefits. It's a big, big difference. Thank you.
I agree. That was my mistake.
Thank you. I believe it's the consensus amongst this council, but I did ask for perhaps a public consensus as well, that the recommendation from this council was to our current Director of Administrative Services to work with the broker to bring back options at the 2015-2016 fiscal year budget level for health and dental.
Actual.
Excuse me. Actual.
I believe it was actual.
Is that everyone's understanding was actual? Okay, then actual.
I think the motion, it's in the minutes, tonight's packet, it says $2 million.
Right.
Not to exceed, and then $156,000, I think, for dental. That's the numbers to work with.
Does anyone wish me to read the items for consideration tonight? We can debate those individually then?
I think we just take them individually.
Well, that's what I'm going to do, but I'm going to read the ones that I shared with everybody else? Okay. First and foremost, the funding of the Assistant City Administrator, Director of Administrative Services position. There was a consideration by the committee of the whole, or acting as a committee of the whole several weeks ago. The vote was seven to three to defund that position. That position needs to be, or that decision needs to be formally considered by the council and action being taken. That matter, I would entertain, well, we don't need a motion because it's of the council, so the floor is open for discussion regarding that budget matter. Alderman Maladra?
This is one of those, this is one of those issues that I believe falls under the category of policy discussion. This is a, this is a major change to our city's organization. It's not necessarily a change that I don't think we should make. It's not necessarily a change that I do think we should make. It is a change, though, that I think that we should not short-change. I think that the discussion we've had to this point has been hurried, it's been rushed, it's been in context of a budget issue, and basically it hasn't stood on its own against the examination of this council. Again, this isn't a statement for or against, it's just an expression of a desire that we take that and we separate it from the budget discussion. We have the policy discussion, and then we move forward based on what we decide at the policy level. Thank you.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the restructuring our staff in the context of a budget discussion seems problematic like other people here. If we can discuss what the most sensible, most efficient structure is, and we do decide that we can restructure, we can always amend the budget. There's nothing keeping us from keeping the structure that we already have ad infinitum. Given that I don't think any of us, I certainly am not qualified to address, you know, what is that most efficient structure? You know, I'm saying we've got, we know we've gotten some feedback that our structure is effective and is efficient. I would retain my vote to keep the funding for the city administrator position and pursue that line of budgeting, and if we analyze it as a policy issue, we can always restructure down the line. Thank you.
Anyone else in the dais? Alderman Reddick?
Well, I think the same argument applies in the reverse to that also. You know, I think that, you know, this budget is just an allocation of dollars for a plan right now. I think that as a group, we've decided this is the direction that we're going to take, and I would look at it the opposite way. If the case can be, a compelling case can be made after experience with operating without an ACA, that it's absolutely necessary that we have the position filled, then I think the case should be made, and then I think we should examine what dollars we're willing to reallocate to devote to the ACA position. We can make those changes. I mean, this is not, none of this is set in stone, but I think that we're taking a different direction right now. We're looking at things differently. Rather than putting it in the budget and saying it's there, go ahead and fill it, I think it's important now that we start making the case, because if we do need that position, it will be interesting to hear where that six-figure plus is going to come from. What are we willing to sacrifice? What positions, other positions within the organization do we think are less impactful or that we can, that we can give up easier to fund that? What equipment, what things can we give up to fund that? So I think it's a very good exercise to operate on the lean side and perhaps make the case for filling the position rather than filling it now. So I kind of look at that in the mirror in an opposite way of viewing it, and I think that's the direction that the council, that was the read I got from the council when we discussed it in the continuation column meeting when we took the vote. Thank you.
Before I recognize Alderman Maladra for a second time, anyone else who wants to speak on this topic for the first time? Alderman Maladra?
So what I take from your comment is that this becomes exactly not a policy discussion. This becomes a trial and error exercise. And so my opinion is that when we discuss changes to our organizational structure, we sit down as planners and we discuss all of the things you mentioned. We discuss what positions do we have that can stand on their own as department heads? What people do we have who can serve as department heads? If we fund this position, what positions can we afford to get rid of? We have that discussion in the context of a planning dialogue rather than under the gun of trial and error. I would rather avoid the errors if at all possible. I would add, though, that until we have the policy discussion, that there absolutely cannot be any action taken to fill the position. That would be, that would be counterproductive for everything and everybody. If you post it, if you get a candidate, if you've got a good one on the line, and then they go, psych, we're getting rid of the position, that would not look good for the city of Geneva in any way, shape, or form, nor do I think would be feeling our way through organizational structure in a trial by error method. Thanks.
Oh, excuse me, Alderman Cummings?
I don't look at it as trial and error. I look at it as Alderman Maladra's suggesting a three-step process. I look at this, the alternative is two-step. We make some changes, we analyze, and we retool. Or a three-step process, we talk, we make some changes, and then we analyze and retool. We end up in the same place. We make a decision, we look at the effect, and we dance with that. We make some changes, we go, I think we end up, in either case, in the same place. We examine the results, and then maybe make some further adjustments. I don't, I'm not against, I'm not against making changes when you see that change needs to be made. And whatever we decide, we will end up in that position with a change and the need to analyze it every six months, or 12 months, or three months, or something. So I'm not, I wouldn't go as far as calling that trial and error, or maybe not in the negative sense of trial and error. Thank you.
Alderman Berger?
I want to remind everyone here that we're not dealing with just chess pieces on a board, that this is a woman who's being asked to do her existing, existing old job and the new job that we've hired her to do. So ending up in the same place, I'm worried what our new city administrator is going to end up with, one foot in the grave, because she's going to be trying to do two jobs, two very demanding jobs at once, without any direction from this council on how we expect her to delegate a job that kept her busy at least 40, 50. her to delegate a, a job that kept her busy at least 40, 50, 60 hours a week. We're not going to have the policy discussion about how we're going to restructure this, we're just going to eliminate the funding to hire a replacement and evaluate her in six months? You know what? I bet, I bet she's going to make some mistakes in those six months, because she's going to be trying to do two jobs at once. I agree with Alderman Maladra, I would like to see not any action taken on hiring an Assistant City Administrator before we can have those policy discussions, but I think, to be fair to our new incoming city administrator, we need to have those policy discussions and decide how we're going to restructure the city staff if, if we're really going to eliminate this position. I think that's only fair to the incoming city administrator. Thank you.
Anyone else in the dais? Alderman Simonian?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't look at it as replacing, I look at it as restructuring, taking those job responsibilities and redistributing them to either existing folks, or possibly part-time, or possibly a lower qualified individual, and outsourcing some of this as well, like, for example, the contractual part of the, that equation. And it also gives the opportunity to, to do, to accomplish two things. One is give additional responsibilities and earning opportunity to the current employees. And two is save the city money. So it's a win-win, in my opinion, if you cover all the bases, by redistributing those responsibilities, rewarding those people for taking on that responsibility. And then, at the end of the day, the city saves a little, some employees make a little more, and it's just a, it's just a restructuring. That's how I look at it. It's not a, it's not eliminating, it might be eliminating the title, but it's not eliminating the responsibilities. And I don't think anybody thinks that, or I don't anyhow, I don't want to speak on everyone's else's behalf, I'm not looking at it as take all of the city, current city administrator's responsibilities, Stephanie's responsibilities, and add that to the current city administrator's responsibilities, and now you're responsible for doing it all. No, I don't, I don't, for me anyhow, that's not what I'm looking, I'm looking at redistributing the current responsibilities to existing staff and/or finding a creative way of possibly handling those responsibilities. That's how I look at it. And if it makes, and if nothing's going to get done, do we have the conversation anyhow? Whether it's budget or not budgeted, it really doesn't make a, a lot of sense, in my opinion. Thank you.
Before, Alderman Rodecky?
And I guess to, to that point, I know we saw a document that broke up, broke down some of the ACA's current responsibilities, and one of the major ones was the negotiations of contracts. And, and you know, this will come with some costs, this is not a zero, you know, we're, that we're going to save all the salary and benefit of an ACA. I think we all recognize that we're willing to incur some cost. But if we outsource just the negotiation of the contracts, that's a significant portion of what the ACA, my understanding is, is what they do right now. You know, and if you look at being able to delegate another 25% to 40% of those duties among existing staff and getting creative ways on some other, there's, there's a way to attack this. Nobody wants to set anybody up for failure. But, you know, I think we have to create an environment, I think we, I think we have to foster an environment where more creativity is used to get the job done. You know, without, if you, I don't know what percentage benefits cost us of, of wages, you know, I'm sure there's a, a number, but currently, if you think about it, all the people that are in administration between the, the city administrator, the ACA, the mayor, the clerical support, you know, I mean, we're probably closing in on salary and benefits in excess of a half, of a half a million dollars for the administration. And there's got to be creative ways to attack that with that, with that amount of resources that are being dedicated to administration. There, there have got to be better ways to do that. You know, the argument, should we be legisla, should we be doing policy on the fly? You know, my fear is that it will never get done if we don't take the leap, ask for a little, you know, take a leap of faith that we have professional staff that'll be able to step up and do this, because it seems like we get in this cycle that we get halfway through it, and we go, "Well, you know, now the budget's coming up, now we're midway, now we're," we get that discussion with the employee benefits and health insurance all the time. There's never, like, the opportune moment to pull the, to, to make a move. And again, this is, and this is a restructuring of money, this is a reallocation of funds, this is, this is not the cast in stone. The worst thing we could do with anything in our budget is to say we're not going to deviate from it, so, you know, I do kind of look at this as maybe a policymaking decision of the way we're moving forward with how we want to attack certain problems, and that's looking at them differently. That's first and foremost what the message that I think this sends, not setting up anybody for failure. Thank you.
Before recognizing Alderman Maladra, anyone else who has not yet spoken? Alderman Maladra?
I'm a big fan of looking at things differently, and in fact, I'm saying, let's look at them differently by setting aside time on weekly, monthly, quarterly, however often we have to do it, but set aside time to actually sit down and hash it out. I, I find it interesting, we are all business people, or we claim to be business people. I do not think that we would restructure our business organizations after one hour of discussion where we are going, "We should, we could try this," or "We could try that," or "I'm sure there's creative ideas out there." What we would do is we'd say, "Let's get together and start talking about what those creative ideas are, and let's make it happen." I agree with everything that Alderman Rodecky said, what I, what I react negatively to is the idea that we're just going to make this shit up on the fly as we go. That's not running it like a business, that's not doing a well-managed organization. A well-managed organization takes difficult issues like this, and I'm sorry, I believe it is difficult. We created this position for a reason, we haven't gone through that. The position serves certain functions, some of which we can transfer, some of which maybe we can't, we haven't gone through that. We need to sit down and we need to have that discussion. We could do it tonight, we could sit here until midnight. I also believe that after you've been in place for three hours, and the later it gets, the worse your decisions become, which I think is also a new way of doing things. So yeah, let's embrace new ways of doing things, and let's sit down and talk about them. And not just talk to have talk, but let's have functional discussions with decisions and action items the way a business does.
Anyone else? Alderman Burkhart?
Well, and one, one thing I'd like to talk about, if we could have those kind of Wednesday night, is to have a casual discussion with some of our department heads, some who are in the audience tonight, to ask them honestly, "Do you really have time to take on more work?" I mean, every job I've ever done, I do to 110%. I mean, somebody could offer me another $10,000, but if it's a responsibility I can't do, I'm not going to do it, and I just am really incredulous at the level our department heads work to think that they're all going to be able to take on a piece of this pie. So that's why I would like, but maybe there's another creative way to, to split that job up. Maybe it doesn't involve giving more work to department heads, but I would like to have that discussion in an environment that we could actually talk and have a free flow of ideas and, and for the, the department heads we were talking about giving this extra work to, to really be able, for them to come to us and be able to speak honestly and candidly about if this is something they're even interested in taking on. Thank you.
Anyone else in the dais? Alderman Kilberg?
I, you know, I think this is one of those situations where really...
Oh, Dean, could I have you turn your mic up? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we're going to need that, aren't we? No, I, I think this is sort of one of those situations where the council's sort of drawn a little bit of a line in the sand as it relates to, to this issue and to the budgeting process, and I think really, at the end of the day, the, the real question is, does the purse strings really drive the process and the urgency of the process? And I think that's what I think some council members are asking for, is some urgency to the process, and eventually, with the process, then you can really arrive at some type of a policy moving forward. I think if you look at our staff and the key management positions within our various departments, we've got all new people. And one of the things that I ask for, or that I think that we really need to consider, is to take a look at the skills that these new members have brought to, to our staff, and see if, if, if there might be an interest possibly by some of those staff members to take on some additional responsibilities. What would the organizational chart look like under the new administration? Obviously, Ms. Dawkins has a skill set as Assistant City Administrator. When Ms. McKittrick departs, you know, is she going to assume all those responsibilities that Ms. McKittrick assumed previously? I think I'm interested in seeing what the organizational chart could look like potentially, a reorganization of, of the departments potentially. Convinced me that we can't do it, and then I'll be the first one to support whatever organizational chart that she brings forward, if that would include an Assistant City Administrator or not. Maybe it's going to take on a different role, or some type of different responsibilities, so that we're meeting all the various needs, all the responsibilities that it takes to run a city this size. When you have a major change at the top, I think that this is an excellent opportunity to step back and take a look at your team and, and how you can plug those skills in effectively. There may be people in a department, leading a department, that may want to develop their toolbox and their skill set in other areas. This would be an excellent opportunity to, to give them that opportunity to come forward and say, "Hey, I would like to take on some additional responsibility in these areas." Again, I don't know what those are, but I'd like for somebody to spend some time analyzing it and seeing what it might look like, and if it doesn't work, if we're going to need to bring in a city administrator with a different set of skills other than Ms. Dawkins, I think the council's prepared to do that. But let's take a look at it, and I guess purse strings control everything. And tonight, I think purse strings are being used somewhat to control the process or to create an urgency to the process. That's it.
Thank you, Alderman Kilberg. Anyone else in the dais? Just a couple of comments I'd like to share. Alderman Rodecky referenced that there was the assumption that perhaps 50% or so of the job responsibilities was with respect to serving as chief negotiator. 25%, it's actually 15%? This is based on the job description that all of you had received previously? No problem, just to clarify. A couple other comments were made, and forgive me if we're not, actually, let me jump back to Alderman Simonian's original comments, this is just a clarification. I was looking at my note to you, and the word "chief" appeared, that clearly was a scrip nizer that was not meant in any shape or form, like derogatory by any means, so I don't know how the heck that appeared. But with respect to the ACA, let's not forget that the other half of the Assistant City Administrator position is the Director of Administrative Services. We all know that 10 employees report to the Director of Administrative Services. We all know that based in our comp communities that we survey regularly of the 25 or so, only two don't have that position, that's Batavia and St. Charles. St. Charles's administrative costs are actually 30% higher than Geneva's. St. Charles has a Director of IT, a Director of HR, a Director of Finance. Just by comparison's sake, not good, bad, or indifferent, we have two professionals in the IT department, St. Charles has 17. The City of Batavia moved to acquire or hire a Assistant City Administrator, Director of Administrative Services position, and unfortunately, that was not successful for multiple reasons. They selected instead of Director of Human Resources. The challenge there still exists, if you speak to some of the professionals there. A comment was made earlier that we should examine the results and, quote, "make the case." My only position is, and you've heard me say this before, I believe the case has been made for 17 years, when we first created the position and as the position's evolved. So I think the case has been made. I do believe the prudent way forward is to leave the funding in place, to work with the new city administrator with respect to gaining her lay of the land, her understanding of how the position, her position should be conducted, and how a ACA slash Director of Administrative Services position can be helpful, or can be differentiated from what's currently in existence, so those are my comments. Anyone else? It's a public meeting, anyone in the audience? The motion on the floor is, based on the Committee of the Whole vote, is to defund, I believe that was the language used, the city admin, the Assistant City Administrator slash Director of Administrative Services position. A "aye" or a "yes" vote? Excuse me, effective June 13th? Yes, forgive me. An important clarification!
Yeah, that is.
A hell of a vacation, wasn't it? Effective June 13th, an "aye" vote would sustain or support the defunding, a "nay" vote would, of course, object to the defunding. So the question on the floor is "defunding." Since it currently, okay? Mr. City Attorney? Uh-oh.
The motion on the floor is with regard to the entire budget.
We are segregating these items out.
Well, that's not what the motion on the floor is. The motion on the floor was to approve items, if I'm not mistaken, asked the clerk, but I think it's to approve 11A, with a motion by Alderman Marx and a second by Alderman Brunon.
So we have to make another motion then to discuss?
Well, as I understand the resolution, the resolution includes the budget with no funding of the Assistant City Administrator's position. Is that correct, Stephanie?
That's correct.
And with certain limitations on medical and dental premiums. Correct, premiums. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I think that's the base. If you're going to modify that proposition, then if, for example, if you were going to establish funding for the Assistant City Administrator's position, then there should be an amendment, an amendment to the existing motion would be in order. Otherwise, if it is without that funding.
And that same process would then include all other items?
That's correct. Well, that's at the will of the council, but I think the state of the motion is that you have a budget proposition with certain components in it, and the one that's been discussed most recently does not have funding for the city, Assistant City Administrator's position, as of...
Would it be fair to ask a council member to add an amendment to then refund? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, I, if there is a council member who wishes to have the council consider the funding of the city, Assistant City Administrator's position, then it should be by moving for an amendment to the proposed budget.
And then we would vote only on that amendment?
Amendment, to see whether or not it's going to be made part of the main motion.
Is anyone interested? Alderman Bruno?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we amend the motion, or ask that we amend the motion to include funding of the city administrator position. Is that...
No.
You comfortable with that?
It's to amend the pending, the motion to, that adopts the fiscal year budget by including, and I guess you'd have to, Stephanie, you have to have certain funding limit, I don't know what those limits are, what those amounts are.
I mean, I think if they are moving to fund it, it would be funded at the level it was previously funded, at earlier versions.
I don't have the dollar amount for you, but I'm...
Alderman Simonian?
The Cow, the Cow, the Cow meeting, we, we voted on three items.
Correct.
Should we not be voting on those three all at once as part of this budget? And then the additional items address separately as an amendment to this vote?
Well, the challenge with that, and my attempt to segregate all the issues, is that several council members supported one element of those three, but not other two, and vice versa, and therefore casting an "aye" vote or a "nay" vote would, in essence, send a signal that they're not supporting the other two, they actually did, and so to bifurcate the whole thing, I thought made most sense.
That's right, I would agree with that.
But it's my understanding that the Committee of the Whole recommendation is, in essence, Resolution 2016-20, which is now pending on the... Resolution 2016-20, which is now pending on the floor.
If we do it that way, with it all-inclusive, if those folks that don't want, you know, vote, want two of the three, they're gonna vote nay, and if it, and then after that, then you can split it up, right?
After the vote?
Yeah.
You need a motion to reconsider.
You can reconsider them individually.
I think what the City Attorney's telling us is, right now, the budget has those items out, and if we wanna put it back in it, someone has to make an amendment to that budget.
That's what Alderman Brunon was doing. And then, but the larger question was, do we need to do that on the remaining seven?
Yeah, because those, the budget came from the Cow. I mean, that was the issue.
So that means I have to make all the, wait, so we've got two items?
But we're only gonna go one at a time.
We're gonna go one at a time. This motion is on the ACA's DAS?
Do I...
If you're seeking a motion, a motion would be to reestablish the funding for the Assistant City Administrator's position as previously, at the previous level of the original budget.
I would move to amend the motion to reinstitute funding for the Assistant City Administrator position at the levels shown in the original budget.
There's amendment, a motion for an amendment on the floor by Alderman Brunon. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second Amendment laudra. Now, the amendment, any continued discussion on the amendment as offered? Are you comfortable, City Attorney, with the vote?
Correct, and it is a debatable item, but unless, unless the ready's ready for a vote. God, it has been...
Any additional comments or questions? Mr. Clerk?
I'm sorry, can we get clarity on exactly what you're gonna add?
Your vote, your vote would be on the amendment only, to whether that amendment would be added to the main motion.
So yea would be to...
Refund it.
Yeah, so it's just the opposite, what I said. Yea would be to...
Refund.
Refund. Nay would be to sustain the decision by the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready.
Let me...
Holy moly!
I wanna make a point of war.
I think there should be a point of war here.
On the amendments, I believe it's just the Alderman that would be voting. Budgetary, the budget itself, the completed budget, is by the corporate authorities, so that includes the mayor's vote. So, but I think on the amendments, it's just parliamentary, it would be just the Alderman making the vote. The final budget would be...
Are you certain about it?
I'm pretty, I'm pretty certain about that.
Ready to go? Third time's a charm.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Based on the manner in which we're going to cast our votes this evening, whether it's this issue or any of the three issues, if there is going to be a need at one time to deviate from the plan at any time, we can then consider a change to be made?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Just through an amendment, exactly.
Okay.
My apologies to the council for the obfuscation. Try it again. Try it again, fourth time. Jim Rodecky?
Nay.
Mary Sino?
Nay.
Tom Simonian?
Nay.
Ron Singer?
Nay.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Nay.
Dean Kilburg?
Nay.
Craig Mladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Nay.
Motion is defeated 7 to 3. The amendment is defeated 7 to 3. I'll seek an amendment to fully fund the Geneva Chamber of Commerce. Now, this is where I'm gonna need some advice here. The original recommendation, the original recommendation was $138,000?
No.
No, I, hold on.
The original budget.
I know. That was the approximate full amount. The second was $100,000.
Just to clarify, based on what the attorney said, wait, from what the attorney said, the original budget that was proposed included funding at $100,000.
Correct. That's what I was getting...
Right. The 138 was never included in any of the drafts of the budget.
Right. That was a line item that we all discussed with respect of what the full funding would be. I just wanna provide that context. The amendment should be to fund the Chamber of Commerce at $100,000.
No, that's what it's currently, that's what it's currently...
So if you wanna change it, you would have to change it to 138.
Exactly, that's why I'm seeking an amendment to that, exactly.
To change it to 138?
To a change to whatever you wish, 'cause there was a significant debate whether or not we wanted to fund at the full level, approximately 138, fund at 100, maybe it's 115, maybe it's 120. We know that part of the debate was that some of that hotel motel tax would be used for development and construction of welcome signs throughout town. Approximately, I think it was 2% of the total hotel motel tax, that would generate X amount of dollars with an additional $90,000 in the capital budget to help us achieve at least a couple of those signs, maybe? That's the discussion on the floor. So the budget currently stands at recommendation of $100,000 funding for the Chamber of Commerce. Does anyone wish to amend that? Alderman Simonian?
I make a motion that we budget at 138,000.
Or the anticipated full amount based on hotel motel taxes?
Yeah, based on that.
I'll second that.
Based on that.
Again, for clarification, Alderman, it's an amendment to...
To the motion, right.
To the pending motion.
Amendment to the motion.
Yep.
And the dollar amount again? It was the full amount, anticipated to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 138. That was the discussion we had.
Yeah. With the asterisk fine print, conversations with the chamber to maybe contribute some of those funds back towards the signage program, but there's no, there's no, it's not part of the, it's not an absolute. It would be nice.
So the amendment to the motion is to fund the Chamber of Commerce at the expected full amount, estimated to be $138,000.
Correct.
Alderman, is there, there's a motion and a second by Singer, I believe?
Second, agrees.
Alderman Brunon?
Yes, so if we, on the full amount, then we have no money set aside for those welcome signs?
We do, within different line items of the budget. We have approximately $90,000 allocated in the capital budget, or infrastructure budget. The overall welcome sign budget is approximately a half a million dollars.
Thank you.
So, so just a question...
Excuse me, Alderman Rodecky, you have the floor, then Marx.
I'm sorry.
Sorry about that, Jim.
In keeping with the general discussion and spreading the unhappiness evenly around the room, while I certainly recognize, you know, the partnership with, with the chamber, I think this is the year to look to a lot of different sources to make a movement, and I think that the, for consistency purposes, I think that we, that we need to consider all avenues. It'd be my recommendation to find some middle ground between the 100 and 138. I would recommend funding them in the amount of $115,000, and the balance that's withheld applying in the capital budget fund for entryway signs. I think it's a related item to them, I think it helps. I don't think there should be any grant application process. I believe the mayor had said that, I agree completely with that. They're our trusted partners, and, you know, we can, again, as with all things in the budget, they're subject to revisit, but I think that that's a reasonable compromise between 100 and 138. I would recommend somewhere in the middle. Again, to be consistent with the discussions and to, to share the burden around the room. Thank you.
Anyone else on the amendment? Alderman Marx?
I just, I guess a question of clarification, so how much, so there's $90,000 budgeted elsewhere throughout the budget, and how many, and how many of the signs does that, do we know, roughly?
We don't know yet.
There's different size signs, there's different prices. We knew the whole, we knew the whole package was about $500,000.
But when we put the budget together, we put together 90,000, thinking we were gonna buy, do some of those signs or not? Two or three? That's what I guess I'm getting at.
Six, six and six, the higher priced ones are gonna be about what?
Yeah, I just don't know what we budgeted for, how many?
We had a, we had a four-year program we were promoting, and the first year would be two main entrance signs and two secondary signs, and we were looking somewhere around $140,000. But we do not have our bids yet, so it's just a guesstimate.
Anyone else on this matter, on the amendment? Alderman Marx, are you...
I'm, I'm fine right now, yeah, I guess.
Alderman Simonian?
Just, is this thing on?
Yeah.
Light isn't on, I don't know. The, in response to Alderman Rodecky, I, I have faith that the chamber is going to respond positively to a contribution to the signed fund.
The amendment does not include that.
Oh, I know, I know, I just have faith, I said faith. It's a word that starts with F, but it's five letters, and I have faith. And, and if they choose not to, next year, we'll have $138,000 to work with for signs.
Anyone else? On the amendment, everyone clear?
Well, is there anyone here from the chamber that wants to say anything? We need to fix them.
It affects all of us.
Thanks, I would like to say a couple things. Gene Gaines, 511 Mead Court, I made a couple of comments this afternoon, wrote them down, and so I'll go through them, and then you can have at it. I believe you always follow state statute and 65ILCS 5-8-314 states. The amounts collected by any municipality pursuant to this section shall be expended by the municipality, that word's used a lot, solely to promote tourism and conventions within the municipality, or otherwise to attract non-resident overnight visitors to the town. I would like you to tell me how entrance signs attract overnight visitors. Second point, the hotel tax is 5%, we administer 3%, so we already contribute 2% back. New entrance signs are certainly needed, we'd all love to have them, but maybe it's a need, a want, not a need in these tight times. I'm really nervous, I can't afford to lose this money. Bringing overnight visitors to Geneva makes the cash registers ring and sales tax for Geneva. According to the formula provided by the state, over $36 million in sales tax is generated by the $138,000 spent in advertising. Entrance signs do not generate sales tax. The hotels tell us that their convention, corporate meetings are a vital part of their revenue, and this hotel tax helped promote them. So those were the comments I had, so we would appreciate full funding at the $138,000 or whatever it is that comes in next year. We would love to contribute back next year, Mr. Simonian. I don't know if that was a little bit of blackmail or not. Maybe next year, the state budget will be passed, and maybe we'll all be in better shape, but we appreciate your consideration, and we'll take anything that you choose to give us, and spend it wisely. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Oops, excuse me. Anyone else? Mr. Clerk? Are we all clear on the amendment?
No, could you reiterate?
The amendment is to fund the chamber at 6.2 million? At the anticip, at the, quote, "full amount," anticipated to be $138,000 based on budget estimates for the 2016-2017 fiscal year.
Thank you.
What, aren't tensions gonna be kept at 138 if it's greater than that?
If the amendment was at full amount, that full amount will be determined once the budget's put to bed, based on revenues generated through the hotel motel tax.
How much was it last year, do we know, or how much do we?
$141,000.
$141,000.
So if we could all just stay somewhere else tonight but home, actually, May 5th is it? Anyone else? Mr. Clerk? Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Mladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
The amendment passes, that is added to the budget, if you will, the budget is amended accordingly.
Just a clarification?
Yes, sir.
That means it's not a grant, correct? In the budget, it says grant.
There's no grant program, no grant formula?
Okay. But the budget does say grant.
Yes, but it was also reg...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask the City Attorney to assist me on this one. I would like to... The budget as amended still includes... is defined as pay for performance for non-represented employees in the City of Geneva. This is included in the budget document for 2016-2017. Is there anyone who wishes to discuss this item and/or offer an amendment to the budget with respect to this particular issue?
I need you to repeat what you were saying, 'cause I was talking while you were talking.
You guys both go to schools like, you know, like, what are you, you a Leo guy or what are you, Rodecky?
Weber.
Weber, sorry. Where are you?
I'm a commuter.
Commuter school. Item number seven on the correspondence I shared on March 31st addresses the pay-for-performance figures within the 2016-2017 budget. Those numbers are included in that proposed budget. Does anyone wish to address those issues either through an amendment? Hearing none? Seeing none? We'll move on. Let's talk about the chamber. No, I'm just kidding. Sorry, Gene, I'm just teasing you.
Same with number eight.
Right. We discussed at great length the reduction of SSA number one by $90,000 and shift that amount to the general fund. That was the consensus and vote by the Committee of the Whole. That $90,000 is not a revenue stream, it's simply a shift, if you will, from the SSA. That is included in the proposed 2016-2017 budget. Does anyone wish to amend that? Seeing none? Hearing none? Move on. Item in my correspondence is to define which capital fund to increase to $1 million, and then have that discussion. I believe Alderman Simonian, you referenced...
The general?
The general fund?
The order...
There's...
The general fund we've been seeing over the last couple of years.
There's either general capital fund, capital equipment fund, or infrastructure capital fund. We can move it out there.
I would think so.
I mean, it's the most flexible of the three.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, just a quick question to Stephanie, what, what makes the most sense? That was my reply when the question was thrown out during the week by, by the mayor, you know. You talk about making a policy decision on the fly, and I know this is subject to further review down in the... And I know this is subject to further review down the road. Which one makes the most sense based upon your experience, your recommendation?
It depends on what the council's direction is looking for.
The most flexible, the most flexible fund.
The general ca-, I, I don't know that flexibility is, is, is the right word. The general capital funds things like studies, computers, those kinds of things. The capital equipment fund is vehicles. The infrastructure fund is your roads and your streets. This is the first year we've used the capital equipment fund because we finally had some money in there to spend, so we are purchasing vehicles out of the capital equipment fund this year. The general capital fund this year is financing things like the fire alarm at finance, replace the SOFIT and FASIA at City Hall, at the police station, bulletproof vests, repairs to the lift and maintenance, those kinds of things.
A follow-up question I think would be, Jim. All funds, funds within those funds can be transferred anytime?
Not infrastructure is restricted.
Not infrastructure, of course, but the other two can be.
Well, I mean, technically, the way we fund the general capital fund is money from the general fund gets transferred into general capital. Now, whether it could be transferred back out to operations, I, I don't think legally that's an issue. I think it's, it's a policy decess-
Right.
-decision.
Well, it seems the discussion that we've had over the last month or so has been the second fund is the one that, is the one that has been depleted the most.
Capital equipment?
Equipment.
None of them were depleted, so let me, let me clarify. Each year, from operations, an amount is figured to move into the general capital fund.
Okay.
We had been growing the capital equipment fund by using money that we got from selling land. We had made a decision that any land that the city council sells would go to kind of seed the, the general, the capital equipment fund. So it's not that, so, in essence, the only fund that currently is being depleted is the capital equipment fund because that was the only fund that actually had a fund balance in it. The other, the other two get funded annually.
I guess the real question is, Jim, and maybe I'm wrong, what you're asking is, is what needs did the staff come forward for of capital costs that weren't approved, because we haven't seen those? And, and I guess we would need to see those in order to decide if we want to increase any fund. I don't know if we're prepared to do that. I mean, I think what we need to look at is what were all the requests? What was, what was, get put in the budget and what wasn't?
That was my reply to Kevin when he asked the question.
And do we, and do we feel any of those are worthy of moving funds around? Yeah, and so to move forward, I need that information. I guess, Tom, I would ask for you to say, let's see what the staff requested and what they didn't, and then we can make these decisions.
We have that, folks. It's in the budget document.
We didn't see what they requested and what wasn't put in the budget. We want to know-
Well, the original list you saw at either strategic planning or on the February 26th meeting, there was a full litany of a bunch of stuff.
In the past, we used to get a description of what the request was and what, what we were getting. We didn't see what we were buying and how they made their case, and we didn't see that. There were probably a number of them that were turned down. I guess if we're gonna, if I'm gonna increase the fund, I need to know what we're gonna buy with it. And I guess that's my question is, is let's see those issues and see if it's worthwhile moving anything around before we just move some money around. Right.
Well, when this was originally discussed, part of this was we were, we had additional revenues, things, you know, talking about the different taxes-
Correct.
-and everything else. A lot of this, I think, is gonna go by the wayside now, so I think this is begin, becoming a moot point.
Right.
Because there's not gonna be available dollars to put in any fund. So I think, quite honestly, at this point, it's a, it's a pass.
That's fine. I mean, because I can't, I can't make a decision without knowing.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I guess we're gonna have to look at some of these other items and vote and see if we're still in a deficit and have to make other decisions.
And I would agree with Alderman Simoni, and if you choose to fund one by a million dollars, you have to find that million dollars somewhere within this budget.
That's correct.
And that would be within the general fund.
Right.
Right.
So I think at this point, I think it's just, we bypass this and get on to the next one.
No, I don't think there was.
This'll be a fun one, folks. Final decision to implement or forego the proposed places for eating tax. Need direction on that. The budget currently has the places for eating tax within it. It is estimated to generate $300,000 a year in revenue for the benefit of everyone. I think, I know that's a very conservative estimate, but nevertheless, Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think, I think my, my sense is we had consensus that we recognized the need for addressing revenue. I think this as a placeholder is fine, but I think we need to really accelerate comprehensive discussion of, you know, what we're gonna pursue, because, you know, the, you can't really plug a referendum number in here because-
Well, no, and of course, it would not take effect May. It would take effect likely at the earliest September of 2016.
Right, so, uh-
Right, and you'd still have to vote on the ordinance, of course, too.
Sure, and I, I'm, I'm supportive of leaving it in there as a placeholder subsequent to broad discussions of all of our revenue options.
Again, it's within the budget currently. Any additional comments or questions? So, Alderman Simoni, then Alderman Marx?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, I think we, we take it out and we focus on a referendum in November for the half percent. I don't think it's fair to put it in there as a placeholder to bars and restaurants and to s-, and see what happens. I think our focus should be laser-driven to a November referendum for the citywide tax for a half a percent. And then if that does not pass, then reconsider alternatives. Thank you.
So you, are you making a motion to take it out?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, I'll ma-, take, make a motion to remove it from the budget.
Seconded by Sino. If, Alderman Malodra on the amendment?
Yeah, because what-
Yeah, there's a second.
So can I talk now? We just said was, I think we should take it out and hang our hats on the sales tax referendum, and if we can't pull that off, then we'll adjust. So my thinking is the $330,000 should be in the budget in some way, shape, or form, because we're saying we're either gonna get it through a half percent or whatever, sales tax, citywide sales tax referendum in November, or if that doesn't go forward, then we'll look at alternatives. The intent being, we're gonna get that money somehow.
We're gonna have to do it, we, we don't have a choice.
Right, so, so when we say take it out, I don't know that we're saying take out the $330,000. We're saying it has to be in there somehow.
But if we put it in there, we have to start implementing the, do we have to?
No, 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 no. If, if the P, I'm calling it the PET. If the places for eating tax, which is currently included in the 2016-2017 budget, remains as is, it is a placeholder. Between the first week of May and September, it's my assumption that we would launch a campaign, much like we would for anything else, to explain, to educate, to share, and then take the council from those who would be impacted, the restaurateurs. And we all know impacted is loosely used because, based on other statistics. If it's the will of the council at ordinance consideration time to implement that, and the council says, yes, I'm convinced it's the best way to go, here's the ordinance, go for it. Or the council could say, here's the ordinance, based on the discussion and feedback, no way, and we could vote it down. There's no economic impact between now and September. It's just a matter of working through the education and how to-
Are you saying that the economic impact begins in September?
No, no, no. If we pass the ordinance, dependent upon that, yes, but it would-
But we, there's no time constraints on the ordinance.
Well, in the fiscal year, there would be, but sure.
There's $300,000-
Based on a half a year, so, yeah.
-in revenue estimated to come in from places for eating tax. So your, your limit is technically April 30th of next year. If you don't bring in other revenue to equal that $300,000, you would have to make an budget amendment somewhere else to cut dollars. The September date is what staff had estimated it would take to go through the process to bring an ordinance before the council, to do the education with the businesses, and to set it up, because it's a tax that would be collected in-house, not by the state.
My concern, my concern is if, if staff is focusing on the places for eating taxes and then also trying to focus on a referendum, is this not gonna get, first of all, burdensome, second of all, confusing? And should we not just focus on one?
And, and just a reminder, though, the revenue, if the sales tax were to pass, the revenue would not be realized until July of 2017, which is in your next fiscal year, not the one we're talking about.
So should we include in the, if we, if we take places for eating out, should we include a budgeted amount for a planned successful sales tax referendum?
No revenue till next budget cycle.
Oh, that's what she just said.
Alderman Rodecky?
I, I guess it just doesn't, it's like a self-fulfilling prophecy. If we're gonna leave the money into the budget, we're assuming that, you know, that the money is on the come and we're gonna... It, it feels as though, you know, I understand the mechanics of it and why one would want to do it that way, but it, it feels a bit of a backing the truck into the, into the, into it. You know, we've, we've spent five years discussing and spending a lot of money about the downtown sales tax and got an awful lot of input from, from stakeholders, and it's still in abeyance pending the half a percent citywide sales tax. It's just, at this point, to, to include money in a budget and to work around that with that assumption that it's going to pass without discussions with a stakeholder, with the pending, I mean, we're, we're gonna want some, you know, we can't sell this thing. It has to be supported by the local community, the half, the half a percent citywide sales tax. You know, how do we, how do we say, hey, we've already put $300,000 in a budget, but don't worry, you know, we're not, you know, we're still gonna study it. It, it feels as though we're, you know, we're backing into the process. I don't know, I-
We're over inflating revenue.
Uh, that's a, that's not true.
If, if we're not gonna pass it, if, if the, if the direction of this council is to go after the half a percentage point sales tax, and we have no intention of doing anything with that places to eating tax until we know that, I, I think we're overstating our revenue. We don't plan on doing it till we know the answer. And we're not gonna see those funds then, in, probably in this year, not $300,000. I think it's an overstatement of revenue. If this is the council's position that we really want to go to a referendum to raise the sales tax, and we're not gonna raise the places to eating tax until we know if that's gonna happen, we're not gonna have this places to eating tax in place probably till-
Oh.
-March or April of next year.
Okay, now I understand.
Which is gonna say it's overstated in the budget.
Well, it can't be overstated in the budget, because if this council decides tonight to remove the-
Right.
-places for eating tax, we need to find an additional $300,000 to eliminate from the proposed budget.
That's correct. But if we don't expect to have that income based upon what we're talking about, we shouldn't have that income sitting in there.
Well, the, the figures are based on a September inaction.
Of, in September here, but we won't know till November. What I'm getting from the sense of the council mayor is right now is we wanted to focus on the half percent sales tax. That answer, we will not know until November of 2016 at the earliest, which means we probably, if it does pass, we probably won't have it in place until January or February of next year, I would think, at the, at the earliest. If, 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 if the sales tax fails, then we're gonna probably go after the places to eating tax, and it's gonna take time to get that up and running. I would think we are gonna have to vote on it. Stephanie was saying it's gonna take till September to get that ready to go now, so at the same point, we're gonna be looking at another three or four months, so we're not gonna have that kind of revenue in here if we're holding off until the referendum, if we decide to go to that referendum, if that referendum is decided. That's my, that's, that's what I'm seeing in here. We gotta make that decision, guys.
Of course. Alderman Brigger?
Couldn't we do the reverse and move forward with the places to eat tax, at least discussion of it, including it in the budget, and make a resolution that if the citywide sales tax passes, we rescind the places to eat tax?
We could do that.
I mean, I just feel, I mean, obviously, I do want to spend more time on this.
That was suggested on the 21st.
Okay, I think I was sick of it. So, I, I mean, I, I feel like the places for eat tax, it does deserve a lot more discussion than we can give at 9:25 at, at night. I, I mean, my guess, my gut feeling is we're gonna see a lot less, uh, uh, opposition from the business community, because it is a citywide tax. It, as opposed to the business district, which is, there are concerns that it would kind of segregate one part of our downtown from the commons. It's a consumption tax. It's gonna hit out-of-town visitors. I mean, we're a restaurant city now. We get a lot of out-of-town visitors who are using our services. There's a part of me that says, well, maybe we need to bring a little bit of that money back to the city from those out-of-town visitors who come in to our great restaurants, and that it's really a pretty minor tax, and if people are opposed to it, they can avoid it by going to the grocery store, buying their own food and cooking at home. So, you know, my feeling is I would be in favor of a, of a places for eating tax, at least temporarily, until we get clarity on the citywide sales tax. And, and like I said, also, I could be in favor of voting for some kind of resolution that if a citywide sales tax passed, I would vote to rescind the places to eat tax. I could be convinced to come around that way. So that's just, it feels like we need to move forward with something here, because the citywide sales taxes, we do have some time that we have, we have to get it on the ballot, I know, soon, but I, I do think it's gonna be a tough road to get that passed, and so we could be sitting here in November, having given up on the places for eating tax, and find that a citywide sales tax is, gets voted down at the, at the ballot. Thanks.
Alderman Rodecky?
A quick question. Are there any restrictions that would be placed on a places for eating tax, that revenue? Are there restrictions with how it could be used?
No.
Thank you.
Other than ones you could place on it yourselves?
Anyone else? Anyone from the audience?
Once again, if we're poised to vote on this and this fails, would the next, would the next item of business be, where would the $300,000 be eliminated from the budget?
Well, we have a, we have an amendment. Yeah, no one's offered a-
No, we do.
Yeah.
If this fails, it stays, it's in the budget.
It remains in the budget.
Right, but if, but if it, if it passes to have it removed, would the next order of business then be, where do we remove $300,000?
Doesn't have to be tonight. We have till April 30th, of course, to resolve the budget overall, but yeah, that'll have to be consideration, absolutely. Anyone else? The motion is to amend the budget and remove the places for eating tax. I believe that was offered by Simoni and seconded by Sino.
Sino.
So point of order, so a nay vote would leave the PET in the-
A nay vote would leave the budget?
PET in the budget.
The PET in the budget, correct. Mr. Clerk?
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simoni?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Nay.
Mike Bruno?
Nay.
Tara Burkhardt?
Nay.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Malodra?
Nay.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Well, in this case, the mayor does vote because of time.
I have six fours.
Six fours is what I have. I have six four.
Re, 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 retake the roll. Or just re-read what you have, put it that way, excuse me.
Okay, Mike Bruno, nay. Tara Burkhardt, nay. Don Cummings, yea. Dean Kilburg's, yea. Craig Malodra, nay. Richard Marx, yea. Jim Rodecky, nay.
No.
No, no, no. He was a a.
Aye.
Yay, six four.
There's no longer on the budget, so we have our homework cut out for us?
If I, if I may just-
Please.
With the reductions from the elimination in the cap on health and medical, which you have yet to vote on tonight, but if you keep that, you actually have about $120,000 gap to fill.
to fill.
The health and medical is already approved to...
Yeah, that's what's in the budget.
But is it, just clarification, is it budgeted or actual? Because we've had some questions on that tonight, which I'm confused on.
The bottom line is, is it's $2 million. So when the renewal comes through and we bring it forward, it would be capped at $2 million.
Okay.
I can't put $2 million flat because it's over so many funds and it's by person. So, we did it.
But that's what's in the budget right now, $2 million?
We left the budget with no increase.
But there's $2 million in the budget or not?
Yes.
Okay.
There may be a little more. There may be a little... What I'm saying is, health insurance, when we bring the renewal, it's all about how many lives you have, what plans are on, what plans you're offering. And we know that our edict is that it can't go more than $2 million.
Okay.
On the budget for dental, the one that's in the packet tonight, it has it at $185,000.
No, I think it's $100...
No, no. If you look at page 65, you have group dental at 185, 265. It should be 156.
I'm sorry, which page?
65.
It's on the recap, I think.
On the recap page.
Okay. And it may not have actually gotten changed on the recap page. Let me go to the actual fund.
My mistake, looking at the shortcut page.
The... You had said the amended budget or the estimated amount or the actual, which currently is 185, 265.
The actual is 156. Whatever, according to...
Okay. Well, I think the original motion the other night was actually the amended, the budget, and then you sent an email later saying you meant the actual. So I think tonight we need to clarify that, and then we can make that change.
But if you look in the minutes of this packet...
Okay, we'll make that change.
The vote says $2,056.
And again, that's what I'm saying. I understand that, so we'll make that change.
Well, I'm just trying to, you know, you said we got to find 120. I just...
But let me explain. The other $181,000 is going to fund balance currently. So if you don't want that to go to fund balance... So if you want that to go to fund balance, then you would still need $300,000. If you don't want that to go to fund balance, you're looking at 120.
And that's the next topic on the table, is there has been interest in returning to the reserve fund to a 90-day minimum?
Well, that might be a loser, too.
Well, I believe that's a goal.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
I think it's a goal.
I mean, that's...
So, we're all...
Yeah.
The 90-day in the budget.
No, I know. The pending budget is 84.6. And we've all agreed after so many weeks that it's now just a goal.
Well, I was under the impression it was a... It was different.
A mandate, yeah.
So I apologize for...
Alderman Cummings.
My only suggestion in the reserves, Moody's, the rating agencies do like to see that. If we're coming to market over the next X number of months, we anticipate coming to market borrowing, then I would say lean in that direction and try and bump this up. And if not, then it's moot.
That would be for a general fund borrowing.
Yes. Yeah.
Not for any of the enterprise funds.
Correct. They'd look it over, yeah. Thank you.
So, folks, according to my scorecard, we have a fiscal year 2016-2017 budget as amended. The amendments or the amendments include funding of the Geneva Chamber of Commerce at the full amount, anticipated to be $138,000. There's no grant program included, and to eliminate the anticipated revenue from the places for eating tax, approximately $300,000.
I need to change the dentals to 156.
And the dental, of course, changed to 156, not 180.
Summary page, yeah.
Well, it's actually in the fund, too, so make changes in both places. Thank you.
So now, we need to see what we did. It sounds like we may have a shortcut.
It's Resolution 2016-20 with those two amendments.
As amended.
As amended by those two.
We don't, again, I think I communicated to all of you, we don't have to. We can... Well, we can continue this discussion.
Yeah, we can.
We don't have to have a budget in place until April 30th.
I personally would like to see the budget with the changes we made tonight before I vote on it.
Well, if you voted on the budget now as amended, you'd be voting on a deficit budget. Okay. You could also, that's probably the best idea. We could table this to a date certain. That date certain could be as early as next Monday.
Yes. Motion table till next Monday.
Is there a second?
Second.
No discussion. Motion to table to April 11th on this matter.
Can we speak to the motion?
No, you can't. Motion to table does not allow debate.
With the special city council.
Yeah. Roll call votes in order?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk.
Jim Rodecky.
Nay.
Mary Sino.
Nay.
Tom Simoni.
Aye.
Ron Singer.
Nay.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marks.
Aye.
73 or 773. Motion to table passes with seven affirmative votes and three nay votes.
So, point of order. So will we see the correct...
This will be at the end of the meeting.
Do I get the changes or no?
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll see the changes?
Yep, we'll see the changes. It'll be at the end of the discussion meeting for the committee, the whole meeting on the 11th. I believe Alderman Simoni is chair in that meeting.
No, actually, Mr....
Oh, special city council.
Right. I would suggest that you have a special city council meeting rather than just adjourning this meeting. You need to finalize all the other actions that you did, so have a special meeting on that.
Alderman Rodecky.
With the meeting will be, well, what we need to do is decide between now and April 30th to balance the budget and deal with the deficit that we've actually, that we're contemplating, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I guess, you know, before we're in the zeal to table this, is there going to be direction? Are we going to do this via two people, two emails per person? Will the staff come back with a recommendation? That's why I...
I would recommend...
Didn't want to table the matter. I want to have a little more discussion as for the direction that we were going to take with balancing that.
I would recommend the council and myself make those suggestions, and we have a broad discussion on the 11th.
Can we get from Stephanie how far off we are?
Oh, absolutely.
So then, we can take a look at it.
And again, that's my question, though, is, you're either $300,000 if you're putting any into fund balance. If you don't put any into fund balance, you're at about 120.
I wouldn't put any into fund balance at this point.
We'll send out a summary email tomorrow, no problem.
Thank you. I would suggest that...
Put it, I think, we've got meetings in the...
Special meetings require that the agenda be specific as to the items that are addressed. So, it would be consideration, continued consideration of Resolution 2016-20.
As amended.
As amended.
Well, it won't be amended. I mean, it'll already be in there. So that resolution will include those amendments.
Well, that, I mean, the numbers will be, yes.
Question. If we need to take a look at this after the adjustments and then try and come up with some ideas to balance it, should we allow ourselves another week?
We can always continue the meeting next week as well.
Are we going to get stuck again next week? Okay. All right. Forget it.
Do you have another council meeting in two weeks?
We can always hold meetings other than Monday nights, as long as we post it 48 hours in advance.
Okay. What happens if we don't have a budget in on time?
Then we're just as good as the knuckleheads in Springfield.
Well, I just mean, I mean, I don't think they're paying too much attention to our budgets.
State law requires us to pass a balanced budget April 30th of every year.
Can a budget be amended after it's been submitted?
Oh, God, yes. We do it all the time. We do it almost monthly.
Do it all the time.
Yeah. If we fail to pass a budget, then nobody comes to work. We don't meet payroll. We don't clean streets. We don't...
To put it in perspective, though, if we don't fund that, if we skip the funding, we're $120,000 short on the deficit on a $90 million budget. So we'll figure that one out by the 30th.
It's not a $90 million budget. You're $120,000 short on the general fund only.
Yeah, the entire budget is $90.
All the other budgets are not affected by that places for eating taxes. The general fund, which is $17 million.
17, okay. I think we can still do that. Well, less than 1%.
Surrounding error.
New business, anyone from the audience? Thank you for your patience and enjoy the comfortable chairs. From the council, any new business? Motion to adjourns in order.
Wait, actually, we continue the meeting, right?
No, no, no. You're going to have news. You're going to have a special city council.
That's right. Motion by Simoni, seconded by Alderman Marks. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?